All right, well, it's four o'clock. We have a course. I'm going to call this meeting of Congress Select Board for September 8th to order. The first item on our agenda is a consent agenda, town accountant warrants, minutes to approve for August 17th, 18th, 20th, and 24th, and proclamation. So Jane, could I have a motion?
I move to approve the town accountants warrants and while I get the rest.
It's a consent agenda.
The consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Would you please call the roll for Jane?
Ms., here, Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Mr. Lawson.
Aye.
Myself, Jane Hotchkiss, aye.
And Kreitzon, I note that it passes unanimously. All right, the next item on our agenda is the town manager's update. Mr. Town Manager.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Just a few quick items. Just, we did receive a donation that was under the threshold for Select Board approval from the Friends of Sleepy Hollow. They worked with our Cemetery Commission and CPW to go out and put on, I think, 25 tree identifiers, I think 23 in Sleepy Hollow and one in the old burying ground. They're nice, kind of subtle markers, which is good because I don't really know anything about forestry, so it's helpful for me when I go to see, to identify trees. So they're very nice, and I'll thank them for doing that. I think we have it, I don't know if we have it on the agenda for an upcoming meeting, but we did get a, we had a fellow from a sustainability program from the University of New Hampshire come and do, basically help us prepare a manual for how to do energy efficiency improvements in historic homes. That report is posted on our website, and I can forward the board a link. I don't know if, like I said, I think we're supposed to have it on an upcoming agenda, which we can get a more detailed presentation, but I just want to give a heads up that it's complete. And then we have our first Transportation Advisory Committee meeting is tomorrow, so we're getting, I know we had talked about that quite a bit, but we're getting that off the ground. You know, I think the model we're going to try and follow is, you know, find issues that are current and kind of discuss those, invite, you know, neighbors, residents, you know, interested parties to join us, you know, in this case via Zoom, to talk through what their issue is, and then also talk about strategic planning and bigger issues and kind of make sure we're doing, we're doing both, you know, concurrently, so we don't lose sight of smaller issues in the name of larger planning issues and vice versa. They're not, they're not public meetings per se, but we certainly want to make sure that we're tracking our activities and reporting back to the Select Board regularly. We have a liaison who will be with us, and like I said, you know, we'll invite residents to participate who are interested in a particular matter. So, but it's not like something that would be on MMT, for example. And then collective bargaining, we have four collective bargaining agreements expired on June 30th, so that process will begin again, I think, next week. So I'll keep the board informed as to how those discussions go. And then obviously, a couple of reminders, Sunday at 1:00 is town meeting at the, we've been saying the Doug White Fields. I've been, I've received some feedback that people don't know where those are, and so they, it'll be, it'll be at the soccer fields behind the Concord Carlisle High School. And when I say behind, it's basically at the highest point of, on the site of Concord Carlisle. So I think the big, but as people approach town meeting, it's important to be mindful of signage, areas where they're going to park, information about wearing face coverings, and a lot of other technical and logistical issues. The moderator has put a lot of information on the town's website about town meeting, I think because this is the first time for all, for any of us doing a town meeting this way, it's really important that people do review that information before town meeting. It's, we've tried to simplify it, but it's also, but it is still going to be very complicated and very different than I think people are used to. And then the last thing I have is that this week is Ag Week, and so there is a website, and I need to find your email, let you know the URL off the top of your head, Jane.
Yep, it is, and if you'll give me one second, I'll pull it up here. I'm sorry, what?
For sure.
I will, I will offer it as we go along.
Yeah, so there is, and we will post it on the, we will post a link to the town's website, I think either tonight or first thing tomorrow. But the big thing is there are a lot of activities each, each, most of the, I don't know of every farm, but a lot of the farms in Concord are doing their own unique programs and activities, and I think that information's all on that, on the webpage. So I would just encourage folks to check all of that out and support our local farms. Any questions on that, on any of that stuff?
Yeah, well, I just note that on that link that we talked about, there's an extensive list of what all the various farms are doing this week. There's quite a lot of fun things, a lot of flower picking, a lot of pumpkin picking, I think Steve Verrill's got Pick Your Own Corn. So I hope folks will get out and visit the local farms, especially if we have nice weather like we've had the last few days, perpentering around.
So it's conqueredagday.com, which I know is, I'm sure they've had that domain for a while, so even though it's, people are accustomed to Ag Day, we're having Ag Week, and there is, I'm looking right here at the list of functions by date. So for example, today Barrett Smith Farm has a Pick Your Own Flowers. So if you want to get over there yet, you have to, there are time slots available until 6:00 PM, but you have to sign up in advance. So support people, check it out, and support the farms, and just the weather is going to be absolutely perfect for those events this week.
Super. Or is there any more questions for the Town Manager, Jane?
And I don't know whether this is really appropriate for the Town Manager or for the Town Moderator, but I have had a number of people calling me about the weather forecast for this weekend, and obviously, we can't control that, but I guess the forecast showed rain on both Sunday and Monday.
Madam Moderator?
Not 100% chance of rain. If there's a little bit of rain, we shall carry on.
Excellent.
Will stop only if it's lightning, really sudden.
We're Concord.
Lightning or a deluge. If it's a true deluge, we will get out of the weather, but everyone is encouraged to bring an umbrella for sun or for rain, whatever it is that's coming out of the sky that you'd like to have a little shelter from.
I think, again, I, well, let me ask, are there any more questions for the Town Manager? Seeing none, then we'll go on. The next item is Chair's remarks. I'm just going to continue to remind people to go online and look at the material that's been put together by the, by the moderator about how things are going to work at town meeting, what you can bring, what you can't bring, waters what you can bring. Try to get there as early as you can. Parking for most everyone, unless you have a real problem, is going to be down at the lower lots between the high school and the BD Center, so it's a little bit of a walk up to the Doug White Field, so give yourself plenty of time. We'll have to social distance, so there will likely be a line to check in, so we're going to have to be patient. So please go online and try to review the materials so you know what to expect at town meeting. Madam Moderator, do you have any other comments that you'd like to make about town meeting?
No, because we won't have presentations at the meeting, it really is important that people go and review the materials that are available on the articles and the motions that are there. Everyone will be receiving in the mail. If you haven't received it already, you're receiving the Finance Committee report, you're going to want to bring that to the meeting with you, and you will be receiving at the meeting a copy of the meeting materials booklet. The meeting materials booklet will be posted on the website under 2020 Town Meeting, so you can certainly go ahead and have a look at that now if you want. The Finance Committee report is also posted on the website, and those will be the two most important things for folks to be reading through before the meeting actually starts. We're going to do our level best to have as much signage as we can guiding people through this unusual-for-us venue, and we're working on having additional staff and volunteers, so we'll try and make it as seamless as we possibly can, but it's still going to be unusual, and we're still going to very much appreciate everybody's patience and adaptability at dealing with all of the precautions that we have to do in light of the pandemic. So thanks to everybody.
I would add that we, Town Moderator led a walkthrough today, a number of us were up at the field and checked out Wi-Fi is going to be available for both staff and for participants, and we checked out the sound system, and it looks like it's all working pretty well, so I think we're ready, and I don't know whether I'll have the opportunity to say so at town meeting, Carmen, on behalf of all of us for all of the work you did, to keep us safe and to yet let us carry out our legislative responsibilities at this town meeting, the town's grateful to you for it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mike?
Steven.
Sorry, well, first of all, I mean, the number of hours that Carmen has put into doing this, I mean, it's worth, worth every penny that the moderator gets paid, but no, it really, it doesn't really, it's really incredible amount of hours of work, so I want to, and to support town staff in what we're doing to try and support town meeting as well, so thank you on behalf of the town departments. The one thing I did want to say is, I didn't mention my town manager report, but it came up in this context. When you look at the Finance Committee report, I just want to clarify for people, because we talked about this the other night, the narrative, the narrative of the Finance Committee report and the motions and the materials you're going to get handed at town meeting are all current with adjustments that were made to both the capital plan and the budget as a result of COVID-19. The warrant has the original budget and capital plan, but once the warrant is closed, you can't change it. And so if people look at the warrant and say, this is the same budget as before, you have to go to the other materials to get the current version of it. So I just, I didn't want there to be any confusion on the two sets, because the warrant is vested in the, or sorry, nested in the Finance Committee report, but it's really their narrative, and then the motions that are really what people need to pay attention to. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that. It came up the other night, and I didn't do a very good job explaining it.
Thank you. Terry?
Yes, I echo everyone's words, Carmen and the entire team. Thank you for the extraordinary, extraordinary effort this year. Stephen, I do have a question on Article 11, now that you've brought it up, and I don't know if this is the proper time, because...
It's not. We have Article 11 on the agenda, so...
Okay, my question is going to be about understanding what is in the book that, so I wait and wait until then?
I think it would be best, I'd ask Carmen to join us, because she's been in, I've asked Dean Vanfield, he's here as well, so when we get into Article 11, please make sure you raise your question if we don't answer it, all right? All right, so continuing with my remarks, the only thing I, also I wanted to say was in addition to thanking the moderator for her extraordinary effort, Stephen, I would like you on behalf of the Select Board to convey to your staff, and particularly Chris Comedy, who is a town meeting coordinator, they've done a great job, Dave Wood at the Light Plant, the Fire Department, the Police Department, Kate Hodge's Recreation folks, I'm sure I'm leaving out somebody, but they've all put in a ton of effort to make this as successful a town meeting as possible, so I hope you will convey our gratitude and thanks to your, to your team. All right, the next item on our agenda is Committee Liaison Reports. Linda, are you with us?
Yes, I am. I'm having, once again, I'm having terrible trouble with the ID and logging on, and it's, I've confirmed in several different ways that this is the correct meeting ID and passcode. I've reinstalled Zoom, and it says it's an invalid meeting number.
Well...
So I've done everything I can to be visual with you, but I'm online, on the phone.
Looks like a telephone. So anyway, the next item is Liaison Reports. I know you had distributed in the packet, at least a first draft of Committee Liaison Reports, or I'll let you take this agenda item, if you would.
Yes, Committee Liaison Assignments. First of all, I want to thank everybody for the input, including the alternative model. Since I can't see who's there, I assume the full Select Board is there, and is Matt in the audience as well?
Ned Turner is with us.
I'm present.
Also, I'm worried where Matt's here.
Yeah, okay, thanks very much. Okay, I'd just like to say a couple of things before I open it up for some brief comments, and that is that I, I for one learned, I had another perspective on the Committee Liaison appointments as a result of seeing the visual for the alternative model, which I appreciated seeing. Before that gets used for any other purpose, however, I think a number of us would have some interesting discussion about how the, first of all, the classification on a couple of them in terms of the type, but also the effort evaluations. But the, so, but I want to not get into the detail of that and just comment that the idea of group rotation is an interesting one, either the, this model, it would take five years to do that. Now, having said that, as you can imagine, feedback from the Select Board members was defined by many of the following items. One was availability of time. Some people are very restricted, they can't do anything in the morning, or they work during the day, or some other hours during the day. That was one factor. Some people would like to stay with their, some of their existing committees, some people had a committee that they were willing to trade, and so there was a variety all over the places we had anticipated, quite frankly. So I think at this point, the draft that you're looking at does the best in terms of the information that was put forward in terms of availability, key committees that people would like to keep, keep committee, some committees that they were willing to either entertain as new committees or potentially have someone else look at. And I've already received feedback from at least one Select Board member saying they would, they still would like to take on some more responsibility, but in some cases, the committees that people listed as some of their top choices, they're limited for taking those simply because either another Select Board member wanted to follow through with work they had been doing with a particular committee and/or the committee didn't, committees that were available did not, are not in the time slot that the particular Select Board member had available. So I'm, I'm still open to hearing some additional comments, and we'll give one last crack at this, but I just want to give you some assurance that, of all the information that was put out there, this was as close as we could get. I can say for myself that in looking at some committee rotation, which clearly I am willing to do next year, but it is painful in some cases to give up committees where you feel you've been helping them on specific projects or direction as they go forward. The upside to committee rotation, as we all know, is that we see a broad, broader perspective, I guess, of issues and functional operation areas that are important to the success of our town government and deliberations going forward. So that clearly is the upside, and I think all of us recognize that. So, and the other comment that was pointed out is that, you know, some committees are staffed, some are not. Some, sometimes people attribute the fact of whether a committee is staffed or not staffed as to the importance of their function, and I think we should be careful enough to confuse that, because each of these committees is important in terms of either issues for the town that they're addressing, operational-functional areas that they're supporting, or in some cases are pretty specific to aspects of the character of our town that people care about. And sometimes committees that are not staffed need even more support from us, and it's critical that we're there and deserve our attention as Select Board Liaisons. And then the only, two other quick things I'll mention before I ask for some further feedback, and that is, each, as we well know, each of these committees or boards has a life of their own, each of the, and they engage the Select Board Liaison member in different ways, and in some cases, it's important for Select Board Liaison matters, members to let the committees find their own voice and be a helpful resource when, when they ask for it. So there is one item in particular that I need your attention on today, in addition to other comments you may want to add, and that is, the Middle School Building Committee is a committee that clearly is going to be a long-term committee, and I think is really, it's been brought up that it would be important to have a board member as liaison who is going to be here for a long time, and that points to at least a couple of the existing Select Board members. I think Susan has indicated her desire that there may be somebody else that would better serve the committee at this point going forward. And Susan, am I representing you accurately?
You're muted.
I know. Yes, you are. Thank you, Linda.
Okay, and so for that reason, I did put it on, candidly, on Matt's list, and I'm wondering how the other Select Board members feel about making that change in assignment at this point.
I would support that, as long as Matt's willing to jump in and do it. I mean, I think I brought up the importance of longevity to a number of committees in my, in my comments about my liaison reports, so, I mean, I think, I think, especially with a committee that we know is going to be engaged with a final outcome, and that that final outcome is going to take a number of years.
Yes.
I think it's really important to have that kind of depth or commitment. I mean, you know, we're all committed to the timeframe that we have on the Select Board, but continuity is good.
Any other comments on that?
Terry, and then Matt.
Yes, I agree with Jane. I think if Susan wants to trade and Matt is willing, that is totally fine with me. I, Matt, Matt is ready for a long longevity now on the board, I think, and my only comment is, I'm the one who, I'm not sure that the burden is, is too equal. I feel that my assignments were light this year, because I was new, and I understood that, and however, going forward, I still think they're fairly light, and I think, Matt, that the Middle School Building Committee might be a very time-consuming one, and you have some other time-consuming ones. So if you are too heavily burdened, I would be happy to, there were a few of my first choices that you have, and if you want to give them up, I'd be happy to pick them up.
Well, I have an issue in that the packet, that the Select Board packet posted on the website just had last year's assignments, so I have not actually been able to review my proposed assignments.
My packet had a new set of assignments on it, I reviewed it.
Yeah, I don't know if the, I mean, again, I still haven't found, I still haven't found the list that has my name on it. Indeed, even the one that, I just asked Stephen for a copy, and even the one I have has Michael Lawson's name, doesn't have my name next to some assignments.
Jeremy, will you get that off to Matt, please?
Very difficult to evaluate without seeing the...
Sure, of course. I think it was a revised packet, Matt, that was sent out. I'm not sure when, but it was, there was a revised packet sent out by Jeremy.
Yeah, I'm not on the emails yet, I guess, and why I don't have it. And Stephen did send me the original packet, it looks like, it doesn't have my name in it.
Yes, clarification, it's not, yeah, I apologize, because I thought you would receive this.
It's, it's in an email that...
Yeah, I just, I realize now, Matt, that I was looking at the wrong thing. I just sent you the word document.
Thank you.
That should, oh, I should look at the attachment before I send it to you. There you are. Okay, that's the one. Sorry.
Okay.
I'll take a look.
What questions for Linda on this? Terry?
I have a question about, is it tradition, then, that people keep the same maybe liaisons for several years, or even their whole tenure? Is that the usual way that we've been doing it?
Well, it usually, it usually is more circumstantial than that, Terry. For example, the Chair has historically always done the schools and the Finance Committee, so even if I had had the NRC for four years, if I became the Chair, I would probably have to jut his in some committees. And then, as I said last time, you know, you've got people who are members of the Board who are working, you've got some who retired, sometimes, you know, you've got kids to worry about, so some folks can't do day meetings, some folks can't do Tuesday, you know, that kind of thing. So I think people, I think the committees and the selectmen that I've interacted with have appreciated having a long tenure with certain committees, especially the really, you know, the kind of complicated ones like the Planning Board or the NRC. You know, that takes a long time to kind of get up to speed with what the heck is going on, so I, so I think it's a mixed bag. I, you know, yes, but, kind of, I suppose is a short answer.
I was just going to say, Terry, I've, I've certainly had a range of committees during my five years, and, and obviously, as Mike said, there's sort of set designated committees for the Chair.
Right.
And the only thing, other thing I think I would add to that is, sometimes if you've got an area of specific interest or expertise, that can either be a reason to have the committee or not to have the committee. It's just, you know, it depends.
So Linda, the one comment I would make about what I saw on the list was, I thought it was pretty balanced, except as I recall, the Finance Committee almost always meets on Thursdays, and so too does hats. And I remember I had both of those at one time, and I think there was a conflict which, so I don't know whether you're just going to plan to manage that or not, but I did notice that. Matt?
Okay, thank you.
Was your head up, Matt?
Yeah, of course, I haven't had an opportunity to check this list for scheduled conflicts. I don't know, Linda, if you had a chance, given the parameters that I...
Well, I generally know most of these, yeah.
Okay, so then, maybe I could take hats. I don't think, as just given the previous correspondence that we got, that we need to have an assignment for the Hanscom Field Advisory Committee, that perhaps we could delegate that by assigning some other citizen. some other citizen, you know, to that.
Yeah, that is a consideration that was brought to our attention.
Yeah, so maybe I could then take hats instead. And then, yeah, I mean, it's all...
Take a look at that.
Oh, the ZB, no, I, no, there's a problem potentially. The ZBA also meets on Thursdays, I guess.
Right.
Yeah, so I don't know, the, you know, the week of the month or whatever might not line up, in which case it might be okay, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, okay.
How do you want to proceed?
Well, I think, I, I think I've heard this round of concerns or, and some suggestions. And I, what I'll do is probably be in touch with a couple individuals if I, and I'll try to accommodate the issues I've heard.
All right. Are there any other comments or questions about this item on your agenda?
I was just going to thank Linda because this is a, it's a thankless task. You're, you're trying to play matchmaker, which means you'll, you'll leave everybody a little bit questioning something. And I appreciate your first, this is one of those wonderful chair duties.
Right. Thank you very much.
I agree with Jane. Thank you.
Me too.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Thanks, Linda. All right, the next item on our agenda is Article 11, Capital Debt Plan Amendment. So what I think I will do, Mr. Banfield, are you still with us here?
I am.
There you are. Hi, Dean. Welcome. For the record, introduce yourself, and then why don't you tell us what you're trying to do here?
Okay. I'm Dean Banfield, 73 Walden Terrace. And as a disclaimer, I am a member of the finance committee, but I am recommending this amendment in my personal capacity. I'm not representing any other person or group. And that is the end of my disclaimer. So I distributed to numerous committees. First, I worked with the moderator to try to thread this needle and figure out how this ought to be done. Because what we're really trying to do here, what I'm trying to do, I'm not saying we, I'm saying me, what I'm trying to accomplish here is to have the funding for the Healthy Bus Initiative be divided between free cash, a modest amount from free cash to purchase the buses, and a debt levy. And that would be to build long-term infrastructure to support up to four parking places at the, at the bus depot. So it would be like this reconstruction of a four parking place area with trenching and conduit and, you know, big wires. And that will last a long time. It will service more buses than the two buses that we're going to buy. It will have long-term financial benefits for both CMLP, for the school system. There's a lot of benefits all the way around for that. And it ought to be done using a debt strategy rather than just taking money out of the bank. So that's the goal, okay? And in consultation with the moderator, just an hour before we came online here, her, you know, we came to a conclusion that the, really the easiest way to do this is not to wait until... Something's echoing there. I don't know.
You're muted, stop.
But the easiest and cleanest way to do this is to not wait until we arrive at Article 30, and then use the rule of the meeting, which allows you to reconsider a, an article that we passed long and far, long ago and far away, which is valid and allowed, but it becomes really tortuous. Would be to just dive right in on Article 11, and amend Article 11 with some fairly straightforward numbers. Right now, Article 11 seeks to borrow $2.675 million. And that would be modified via the amendment language to $2.825 million. And then the total numbers would also be amended from $3,906,855 to $4,056,855. So this just adds $150,000 to our levy limit debt. It's well within the limits that were published in the warrant. The numbers we're asking for this year are well below what was in the warrant. So it's, it doesn't violate any, anything that would, you know, prohibit raising the limits beyond that. It would also require me to make a one-line addition under the Public Works 7B, you know, lay an infrastructure for the bus depot, $150,000. So it adds a line to the capital plan. So those are the three elements that would be the easiest way to amend this, to just dive right in at Article 11, lay the groundwork. And so when we get to Article 30, Brian Folds, who I'm completely behind his effort to get this done, would just have to move $50,000 additional dollars to just purchase the buses. And so that's, that's kind of the, that's my goal, okay? Yes, Terry, I'm not really moderating this, Terry's got her hand up. Mike? Go ahead.
Mike, you are, you are unmuted.
Mike's muted.
Yep, I got it.
There you go.
I've stopped my video. There you go. I'll be with you in a moment. There you go. All right. So there was an original proposal by Mr. Banfield, which was, I would say, was a little more complicated than this proposal. So I'm going to turn first Carmen to the moderator to sort of put this in perspective for us, because this is, as Dean has indicated, this is a much simpler, whether you agree with what Mr. Banfield wants to do or not, this proposal is much simpler. So Madam Moderator?
Yeah, so the, the, the one, the one thing that Dean didn't mention is how the rule of the meeting figures in here. So the rule of the meeting, which we have typically adopted for the last, I don't know, I can't remember, 15 more years. One of the things that it provides is that if there is to be an amendment increasing an appropriation from borrowing to above the number that has been authorized by the finance committee, or approved by the finance committee, then it, the amendment would need to either specify an offset or specify that the borrowing would be a debt exclusion. Now, if the finance committee, in advance of town meeting, approves this, or votes in favor, votes to recommend an increase in the capital appropriation plan, the borrowing under Article 11, then we don't run into that in the rule of the meeting. But otherwise, Dean, to make this amendment, if the finance committee did not support the increase in the borrowing, even though it's within the levy limit, then Dean would need to do one of those two things, either I...
To be clear, and I think I stated it in the paperwork I sent out, I would not, I would not, if I did not get buy-in from the finance committee, I would not move this. So that's...
Right, okay. But so we've got a little bit of a, it, it, there is kind of an order. So we couldn't, right now, because the finance committee has not yet had a chance to discuss Dean's proposed amendment or approve the increase in the borrowing under Article 11, there isn't any way for Dean to frame his amendment without doing one of those two things and publish it. And when I say one of those two things, it's either the offset or the debt exclusion. So there wasn't any way to actually draft it and include it in the meeting materials or put it on the website. But if Dean brings this amendment to the finance committee and they support it, then now he will be able to frame the amendment, and he would be able to make it at town meeting.
So if Dean goes ahead and does this, essentially it will be, I don't mean it, a simple amendment to Article 11, which will add $150,000 for infrastructure to the capital plan. And if my memory serves me, even with that addition of $150,000, that was less, that would still be less than the original capital plan that was previously approved before we got into this mess that we're in. So Dean, are you going to Thursday, I know your committee is meeting on Thursday, and are you going to formally propose this then as an amendment to Article 11?
That's my intention. And, you know, if, if the, if I find a favorable response, then that's the only context in which I, I could bring this to the, to the meeting, to town meeting.
That's, I don't think that's correct.
Well, I, I could bring it, but I'd have to ask for excluded debt. I'm not intent on that. It's not, you know, not doing that.
Because that would require us to go to a vote and...
Yes, all of that.
Bond counsel.
All that rigmarole, right?
Yeah, actually, the point about bond counsel is a good one, Mike. We did speak with town council about how the rule of the meeting applies here when we're dealing with a debt offset. And the key would be whether, given an amendment like this that happened, if it were to be brought as a debt exclusion item against the recommendation of the finance committee, you may or may not be, get a statement from bond counsel that he, a clean bill of health, that he, an unqualified support of the action by town meeting. So that's an additional complexity here, and that would cause us some trouble in trying to sell the bonds.
Carrie, I know you've been patient. You have a question, so please go ahead.
Okay, yes, I understand what Dean is proposing. And I understand that Carmen, you've been working out a good method for doing it, and thank you for researching with council. I want to go back, though, before the amendment even occurs. I do not understand Article 11. And because you've been talking about some change in these books, and I suspect when we get to town meeting, we're going to need to fill in the public before we do any amendment, because this article is on the consent calendar, I think. Can someone please explain what is going on with the books? I really...
Article 11 is not on the consent calendar, I don't think. Am I correct, Carmen?
You are correct. Article 11 is not on the consent calendar. Article 11 is slated for full deliberation. And in the meeting materials that are at the printer as we speak, and have already been posted on the website, the full motion in, under Article 11, including the complete table of capital projects for the fiscal year 21 capital plan are in the meeting materials. So everyone will have that in front of them to read at the meeting.
Right. And, okay, thank you. So it's not on the consent calendar? And I haven't, I didn't know that was on the website, so I haven't seen that yet.
It is, and it was also presented at the public hearing that we had. I've forgotten the date, but...
Right. And I, I've actually forgotten, okay, so I'm looking at page six of the Fencom report, and it says that Article 11 has a cash outlay of $1,081,855. And that's where I'm lost. That is what I'm hoping is in this other material, so that we don't spend a lot of time spinning our wheels at town meeting.
So Terry, did you mind if I talked to that point?
Please.
Okay. The, the article that is for capital items is broken into two components. One is coming out of the operating budget of the town, and that's the one that you're referring to, which is like, it's been reduced down to $1,000,000 and something. I don't have it in front of me right this moment. So that...
Can I stop you right there? Is there a breakdown of that?
Yes. So if you, if you, if you look at, I don't know what, if you look at the warrant piece of the finance committee report, in the rear of that, you will see the original list. It is as printed in the warrant. And so there are a few more projects. Maybe there's a fire engine renovation that has been nicked off of there or something. I've forgotten, Stephen couldn't comment on that, but that list...
No, no. Problem. There, there has been a major change here. Maybe Stephen couldn't explain.
Yes. So the Article 11, for the first time, and, and for the first time, we're combining cash capital or capital outlay with debt capital in the same article, which is really kind of a, and this is the first year we're doing it, but it's, it's something, it's basically a minor modification to how town meeting votes on capital. Instead of having cash capital be in the operating budget, we're taking it out, so the capital plan is in one article, and it's two components, outlay and debt. And I think the total sum went from 1.9 to 1.081. But that is a combined amount of cash. But the reality is, there isn't an expenditure for out, for debt, because that, the first payments are in FY '21. This is, it's a debt authorization.
Right.
Well, well, my question is, the original cash part was $1,787. Now we're down to $1,081.
Right.
$1,000 has been subtracted, and I don't recall which projects have been taken off.
Information Systems, $195,000.
Yes, well, Dean, at the point, Terry, I think if you go back to the information that we presented, both...
At the hearing.
At a public hearing, but also, we, Carrie and I did a presentation, I think, the week or two before that, and we gave out PowerPoints. But either the information we sent with the public hearing or the one before, the presentation before that has that information.
Both, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I will, but I'm just concerned when we get to town meeting, if I don't remember, that there might be lots of other people who don't remember. That might be easier, somebody just says, here's the changes, one, two, three, four. It would be very quick and easy to do that. And then on the borrowed funds, in the second piece, have there been changes to that piece?
Yes.
Okay. So I think before Dean makes the amendment, in my opinion, we should go through.
Presented at the public hearing.
It's in the meeting materials, Terry, exactly what's going to be moved.
Right, all right.
I agree that it's not the same as what was in the warrant, but it's, the meeting materials are clear. That'll be, we'll receive.
All right. So, so you're going to go, Dean, you're going to go to the finance committee, your finance committee meeting on Thursday, with the notion that you would like the finance committee to reconsider Article 11, to increase the capital appropriation by $150,000 for the infrastructure for the bus. And then if it's adopted, then Mr. Folds, when he presents Article 30, will simply strike out the $150,000 for infrastructure, and his Article 30 will now just be requesting $50,000 for free cash. Do I have that right?
The piece for Mr. Folds is, is completely right, because he, by the time we arrive there, we, he just needs $50,000.
Got it.
The other piece is a little bit of a one-step, two-step process. At, at the finance committee, I have to ask for them to just increase the total authorization that they're approving. And then that allows me, as Carmen pointed out, to craft language, to put some words behind what they're approving, to be able to put that into an amendment that says, I want 150, they, they've authorized through their recommendation a, a higher number. And now I can make an amendment saying, I want this higher number, 150 more, and I want to add one line to the capital plan.
Just add, add a line to the capital plan.
Right. So that is the recommendation that the moderator has made, and I think it's the simplest and cleanest. But I think there is a cleaner way, and that would be for the town to just move this extra 150K, and then there's no amendment and all the, all the, you know, dust up about amending. If the town could just move an extra 150K and add that to the line when they move it, I know it doesn't, wouldn't agree with the materials that Carmen is sending out, but then we just move forward. The meeting just moves along, and I believe it would just be fine. But, you know, if, if you were to suggest you would do that, we would then have a conver, a different conversation at the finance committee, in which we would discuss whether that, that new motion or that new proposed motion, it met with the approval of the finance committee. It's a different... It's a different strategy, but it keeps the stuff within the committee levels. And then when we arrive at town meeting, there's not be the back and forth associated with the amendment process. We, we just, it's just cleaner. So I, I'm asking you to consider whether or not you would move a bigger number so that we don't have to get, go through this extra step. So that's just, that's just my suggestion. I'm just a citizen and, um, and I think it would be a lot cleaner and simpler if we just.
Simple solution is just to increase the capital budget.
Yes. That's the simple solution.
And add a line, because you have to indicate what for, it just can't be for the heck of it.
Yep, yeah. It's under the public works, you'd end up with a 7B, you know, electrification infrastructure at the bus.
I hope, I hope you will in fact propose a simpler solution to the finance committee. And I'm gonna suggest two things to my colleagues here. One, I don't want to take a vote on this, but I wouldn't mind giving Dean the sense of the committee as to whether or not, if he did go to the finance committee with this proposal, that we might be supportive of it. And then the second thing is you'll recall that we usually have a, a meeting of the select board a half hour before town meeting begins. And I will schedule a 12:30 meeting of the select board for Sunday, the 13th, where if the finance committee does do what we've been talking about, then we would have a chance to review it and offer our opinion on the amended motion so that the moderator could indicate our view along with the finance committee's view to the, to the folks who were there to vote. So I'm asking you if that seems like a reasonable path forward.
Well, I would appreciate a straw vote. That would be, that would be fantastic because it would be, it would start a process of just kind of making a clean, making this a very clean process at town meeting.
Great.
I, I am in complete favor of doing this as the author of the Article 30. I just wonder if, if we would want to amend any of our, whether that changes any of the written material on either Article 11 or.
Well, we'll change the motion that will be in front of the town if the, if the amendment is put forward.
Right.
But it's too late to get any written material, I think. And if Dean's approach is approved by this finance committee select board, I think that's pretty simple to explain that to the town.
Right.
Carmen?
Yeah, I would say that in, in an ordinary year, if we had a change like this, we'd have a handout on the table so that people would pick it up and see it. But this is not an ordinary year and our huge effort here is to limit the number of touch surfaces. So we are striving to have a single booklet that has everything in it. Dean's proposed amendment, or if the select board were to move the motion under, make the motion under Article 11 to include Dean's amendment, it is, that's straightforward enough that I, I don't anticipate a problem in relating it to people without having a screen and without having it in writing. It's really pretty straightforward that, you know, we're taking $150,000 out of this article where it was gonna go to free cash and we're putting it in this article where it's gonna be part of the borrowing for the town capital plan within the levy limit. And in order to do that, we changed two numbers in the main motion. And we add a line to the chart. And that'll be straightforward enough for the town clerk to get it, to have it accurately reflected in the minutes of the meeting. And it, it, we would of course run it by bond counsel, but I would not anticipate a problem there.
Well, why would we need to run it by bond, bond counsel if we were just out of abundance of caution?
Just out of an abundance of caution.
Well, I, I, okay, but it, it's far below the original capital.
Yes, I see no problem.
Yeah, I imagine that would be an issue. Alright, so Jane, you think that's a reasonable path forward? Terry?
Yes, um, I've taken the last few minutes to look at the posting on the website. And I do now understand all of the background to this. And I, and I think that's really helpful. So keeping it simple, stupid is gotta be our motto. I, I like this plan and I would support it.
Okay. Just a second, Stephen, Susan?
Yes, I support it and I appreciate Dean's rationale about separating them out because of the long life of the infrastructure versus the shorter life of the bus. So, yes.
Alright, well, I wish we would have dawned on Dean earlier. Linda?
To, to, not to put too fine a point on it, this, this came up multiple times in different finance committee meetings. It didn't get a lot of traction, so we're, we're at the 11th hour here.
Linda?
Just doing it personally.
Both because Brian has made a compelling case for the move forward on infrastructure and the way that this is being handled, I, I can support it.
Okay, so a straw poll, how many of you would support this amended Article 11 and the subsequent amendment of Article 30 as presented? Just stick your hands up if you would support it. I note that. Stephen, did you have a comment? I'm sorry, I've forgotten to move back to you.
Well, I, I, so I, I support the projects. Quite honestly, it began, it was a citizen's petition before we even got into our capital planning process in, in a, in a big way, especially since this was my first capital plan. So I just wanted, I just want to tell the other side of the story, but not as a reflection of the project or Dean's approach to it or anything else. But we prioritized our capital plan with a lot of thought and a lot of input from town staff and from the community. And we took out projects that are, that are good projects based on feedback from the finance committee about reducing debt. And so because this is an unusual year and it is a great project, I, it's, it's, it's more, I guess, palatable, but what we're, what, what's gonna happen is the capital plan is gonna basically have, have a little bit of a reprioritization without going to the capital planning process. And even though I support what, I support the board's notion and I support the project, in the end, it doesn't really matter to me as much how it gets paid for, because it's a pretty small amount of money in the grand scheme of things. I just do think it's worth noting that this is, this is kind of an atypical way to, to do it. But I think that's a reflection of the fact that it was, it was a citizen's petition from the jump. So it really got, it, it, it got down that path before we can. So would I have put it in the capital plan? Probably, but it just, it wasn't there to do because of the citizen's petition. But I just feel like I have an obligation to tell the board that
Gosh, of course.
There's another side to the story that doesn't matter for the, for what Dean is suggesting, but it's still there.
Well, of course, I understand that you were forced to cut your capital plan and, and now all of a sudden, the capital plan gets to go up. I get it. Alright, are there any other comments? So Dean, I plan to, I will attend finance committee meeting on Thursday. And if you need me to, I can report a summary of this, or you can just do it, it doesn't matter to me. Terry, do I see your hand?
Yes, I just want to, as I said, I was going through that. I just want to double check that we have the numbers right on the capital. Dean, did you say that before your amendment, the total we're gonna borrow is 2,675,000?
Yes. And after the amendment, it becomes 2,825.
Alright, so if you could just double check after the meeting, because on the handout on the website, it shows that the borrowed total is already 2,800,000.
I can explain that.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the capital projects total up to 2.85 million. But if you look at the motion, there is a repurposing of 150,000 dollars of already of, of debt authority that already exists. So that repurposing means we only have to borrow 2.675.
Okay.
Okay, so the number that you're borrowing is 2.675 in order to fund 285, 2,850 of, of, 825 of projects. Does that make sense?
Yes. And I'm sorry to get into so many weeds here. What my object is, I really think that this could just be explained upfront so we don't waste a lot of time on Sunday. Thank you.
That's the intent of the material that's being distributed to town meeting. And the 150,000 is the IT reduction, correct? Dean, do I have that right?
Well, the, well, I'm not, no, that, I don't know what reduction we're talking about. No, the 150 difference between the capital debt for the debt service capital and, and the projects that we are actually engaging in, the difference in 150 is because we are using a prior 150.
Probably appropriated.
And the motion repurposes that debt authorization. So we're only gonna borrow 2.675, uh, 2.675 and we're gonna be able to achieve 2.825 of projects because we already have 150 of debt authorization. I'm gonna add to the 2.675, another 150, so we have to borrow 2.825.
Okay, got it, alright.
Okay.
We've got this. I'll look forward to seeing you Thursday evening.
I, I want to just say, uh, uh, on Brian Fuld's behalf, on my own behalf, thank you so much for supporting the idea of just changing the, changing the funding mechanism. And I know that it is not a formal vote, but I do appreciate the support that's been shown here. And I'll take that back to the finance committee and introduce it in that way. So, you know, I think we can all come together and get this done, as I said, in a clean way that the town can quickly understand. And, and that way we're not getting into a whole amendment process and everything.
It'll be on our agenda for our meeting at 12:30.
Yep, okay. Thanks.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is a brief presentation of Concord's Sustainability Guide for Historic and Older Homes by Abigail Ahern. Ms. Ahern, thank you for joining us. Please identify yourself for the record and.
Hi, thank you for introducing me. I have a quick presentation, so I'm just gonna share my screen real quick. Is that visible for everyone?
Yes, it is.
Awesome. So hi, everyone, I'm Abigail Ahern. And this summer I worked on creating Concord's Sustainability Guide for Historic and Older Homes. This fellowship was through the UNH Sustainability Institute, which is a program that pairs students from around the US with host partners within New England to work on sustainability initiative projects. So just to give a little background about myself, I recently graduated with a master of architecture degree from One Worth Institute of Technology. I've always had a passion for historic buildings, so when I went to school for architecture and decided to have a concentration in adaptive interventions, which led me to my first job in undergraduate school at a preservation firm. Throughout my studies, I was also interested in sustainable design and took several, several courses that focused on green and efficient buildings. So when I saw the opportunity for this fellowship that tied both historic buildings and sustainability into one project, I thought it would be a good fit. So I'm excited to share with all of you the work I did this summer. As you all know, Concord has a goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions by 80% by 2050. And about 60% of Concord's emissions come from existing residential and commercial buildings. I know many people are interested in policy for new buildings, but as an old town with minimal new development, we need to address the existing building stock. And it's been heard anecdotally from folks around town that they'd love to do solar, geothermal or replace their windows, but their house is historic or old. So this project was developed to help Concord reach its greenhouse gas reduction goal by creating a resource for homeowners interested in retrofitting their historic or older homes and implementing that resource into the community in an accessible and understandable format. So to learn the barriers and best practices of these retrofits, I began this summer interviewing a lot of different people. So I started with speaking to Concord stakeholders where I had the opportunity to learn about the different programs and rebates available to Concord homeowners. I also spoke with other communities who have dealt with similar projects such as Boston, Keene and Portsmouth. And these conversations generated ideas for the final resource and some of the best ways to implement it into the community. I also interviewed professionals who specifically work on these projects, like preservationists, architects, developers. And these professionals clarified more technical details about the construction phase of the retrofit projects. And additionally, I met with Concord homeowners who have undergone sustainable retrofits in their own homes. So this was helpful in learning the unplanned barriers and the cost commitments when taking on these types of projects. In addition to the interviews, with the help of Concord's GIS analysts, we were able to create an interactive map that documents the homes that have used the Concord Municipal Lighting Plant Rebates. And these rebates include active solar, ground and air source heat pumps and weatherization. So there are 811 addresses that have used the CMLP rebates in Concord. And we've discovered that only 30 homes implemented rebates in the historic district. So one of the questions we wanted to answer was, how come? Like, why aren't people in the historic district using these rebates? So to further this investigation, I used the map to determine which rebate specifically were used in the historic districts and, districts and areas. So the most used rebates are active solar and weatherization, and the less common rebates are ground and air source heat pumps. So these were areas I made sure to include into the guide to make it easier for people to understand and implement into their homes. So the focus when creating the guide was to make it understandable and accessible for the user. The chapters within the book really focus on addressing the most common barriers when retrofitting historic homes and what the best practices and, and process really is. So this is an image of the cover of the guide and one of the spreads from the Sustainable Strategies chapter that's talking about door and window replacements. The guide will be accessible on the Concord website, so homeowners can download the PDF and use it how they see fit. The guide starts with an introduction that really speaks to why it is important that we address our existing housing stock. And then it jumps into what the step-by-step process is in planning a sustainability retrofit. So there's also a chapter that gives examples of strategies to use that will be most effective. And then that's kind of broken down by building components. So the, the graphic that I made to the right highlights the different components that are addressed and broken down in the guide. The guideline also includes additional support such as further resource, resources, technical details, financing opportunities, the HDC project approval list and a bunch of key studies. So that's all I have, but I'd like to thank you all for listening. And if anyone has any questions or feedback, I'd love to hear from, from you. Thanks.
So just to, I want to thank Abigail for her time. Kate Hanley couldn't be with us tonight, but Abigail, we're close with Kate. And it is, as you can see, a great document that I think will be beneficial to those who want to really, because I know from my own experience, sometimes having a historic home can seem like a barrier to sustainable initiatives. And I think as Abigail has laid out, it's a, there, there is a pathway there. So I want to thank her for her work and, and Kate for, Kate Hanley for the oversight.
Well, thank you, and to Marcia and Heather as well. That's greatly appreciated. Abigail, thank you very much. Are there any other questions for Ms. Ahern? Jane?
This is less a question because I had the, I have had the privilege of being the liaison to the Historic District Commission and the Climate Action Advisory Committee and previously the Long Range Plan. And this is such a beautiful example of the synthesis of our Long Range Plan's goals and, and working through the pro, versus against a process, through the process and, and asking the, the questions that would probably stymie homeowners otherwise. So thank you.
Yes, thanks indeed. Other questions for Ms. Ahern? Well, again, thank you very much for sharing your work with us. And we greatly appreciate you being here this evening and best of luck to you. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is committee nominations. Linda?
Okay, nominate Laura Klein of 15 Rowland Wood Lane to the Library Committee to serve the remainder of a term set to expire on April 30, 2021. Kathleen Riede of 125 Paul Revere wrote to the Library Committee for a term to expire on April 30, 2023.
Thank you. And the next item on our agenda is committee reappointments.
Move to reappoint Jim Smith of 14 Edmunds Road to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term beginning on October 1, 2020, to expire on April 30, 2023.
Laura, second.
Second.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
Thank you, and I note that it passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is committee liaison reports. Who would like to go first? Okay, I will. Thank you. I had a meeting this morning with the Hugh Cargo Trust Committee, where they talked about their campership update. It was a really slow season for camping, as you can imagine, with so many camps closed, and they worked on new job descriptions for our new members and rotation of assignments. I also talked about the process of check processing, and all these folks who get money from Hugh Cargo are really in need of the money. And being able to do it as efficiently a way as possible is really important. And last, they talked about the tax relief and the fall appeal, and they're going to coordinate with the Tax Relief Committee. So that's my report. Who would want to go next? Susan?
Yes, I met, I attended Conservation Coffee on the first. And one of the things that Delia mentioned was that building permit applications are up 30%. So there's a lot going on. And she talked about Jerrale Park is going through the NRC process, and the white prom improvements will come to the NRC in October. And there was a mention of Bruce Freeman Rail Trail link from Sudbury to Framingham is is going to occur. And she said there's a great, a great amount of increased interest in native plants, which is a good thing. She talked about the meadows that are in three different areas of the town. Also mentioned Concord Ag Week and said that the survey for NMI StarMet reuse is, I think, still open. And that's about it for that. Then the Board of Registars met, of course, on September 1 at 8:30, and it was really just to do the tally of the votes, and that was a very smooth and smooth process. I attended a business partnership on September 2 in the morning. And one of the things that came up, John Fawcett is someone who sponsored them, or who's been involved with the mentoring program at the high school. And it's, there have been 35 to 36 students a year and mentors. And it's sophomores, juniors, and seniors. In January, there's going to be an orientation, and they're always looking for people to mentor high school students. So if anyone's interested, check that out. The Concord Together mentioned that the award, the funds that are available through the Community Chest for businesses, the grants were $2,500 each, and they're up to $5,000, which is, and the application is available at the Community Chest website. Then the last report I have is on Cemetery Committee, which met also on September 2. They accomplished all of the restorations of the headstones that they had planned, and they showed them, and the work that the company that did it did was was quite impressive. There are three mausoleum lots near the Pope Mausoleum, and those will be, have been charted out, and they will be going for a rate hearing at some point soon. And the third project on their list this year was the digitizing of cemetery records. That got held up a little bit because of COVID, but it's going to be proceeding. And that's it. Thank you.
Terry?
Great segue from Susan. I attended the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Committee. There's a lot of news there. There will be two co-chairs replacing Jim Lyon this year. Richard Fowler and Nat Welch will be co-chairing the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. And then quite a bit of news on Phase 2B across Route 2, construction is proceeding well. Marcia Rosmussen is working with our curator in the library, Anka Voss, on an interpretive panel that will catalog life in the early 1900s for those so-called white ladies, which I think is the houses along Commonwealth Ave. Also, the landscape architect on Phase 2C is starting to think about how to replace the dead trees in that area. And the last half mile in Concord to the Sudbury line, working on updating wetlands, flagging, and four proposed fence locations. Phase 2D will be 100% design plans are going out to bid this fall. And some exciting news, a member of the Select Board from Sudbury attended and announced that Sudbury is voting, I think, tonight or tomorrow night at a town meeting to acquire from CSX the right-of-way that would go from Route 20 to the Framingham Line.
Great.
Exciting news. And then finally, at the end of the meeting, someone asked about the pedestrian bridge across, up across the Assabett River. And I'm not sure exactly why that came up, but in response, Marcia announced that we're now in negotiations with 300 Baker Ave for an easement. And if we can successfully negotiate that easement, we're going to be eligible for state funds to pay for the construction cost of the bridge under the MPO program. That's really good news.
Oh, wow.
And then in the Library Committee, we have a new chair, Lindsay Howard. And a reminder again that on September 14, hopefully we won't need a rain date for town meeting, we will be home again at 3:00 PM September 14. The library wants to invite everyone to tune into a Zoom meeting to discuss accessible parking at the new expanded library project.
Thank you, ma'am. Linda? Jane, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay, well, I think that I'm going to be short and sweet because many of my committees have been reported on in in other parts of the meeting. The NRC met on the 2nd, and it was a, it was an, first of all, it started with some interesting, some exciting news. Apparently, we have a bald, a bald, a pair of bald eagles nesting at Fairhaven Bay. And actually, they've, their fledgling has flown, which is wonderful. And we have loons now at Walden. So that's, that, that's pretty exciting.
And the third bird event was eastern nighthawks, which have been not present in for quite a few years there in town. I haven't seen them yet, but.
Where have they been reported?
I don't know. They were reported at Conservation Coffee, which I attended along with Susan, but that's a very interesting bird.
Well, I've seen a lot of reports that said that, you know, there, there are some very hidden benefits of COVID, and some of it is, is in wildlife appearing or sightings or, and including bird life in areas that we haven't been seeing before. Now, who knows if they're connected? In terms of the NRC's agenda, the, probably the most interesting discussion was with Clary Couteau from Kiola's Commuter Services, the MBTA, who was there hoping, I think, to have a fairly, perform a right-of-way discussion. But it morphed into a larger conversation about a access to the MBTA's planning process, which Concord has on record having been promised. And yet, there seems to be a, a belief that they don't need to or are too busy to produce that. And this particular right-of-way request is to just to verify jurisdictional resource areas for vegetation control and and management in the 200-foot riverfront area, the Sudbury and Assabett Rivers. And it seemed to be that there, I don't know whether, some of the folks on the Select Board probably don't remember, but we had a big discussion over this section over by Neshoba Road. I mean, there were some, some significant actions that had caused the, the, the promise of greater engagement by the MBTA with Concord before acting, which our trustee NRC is now following up on. So that was, that caused some, it took a large portion of the meeting's time. Another point of discussion was, not surprisingly, the continued discussion around the removal of and then replacement with a separate, a new bank of the, what's known as Citizens Bank at the corner of Baker and Main. And then there was also a discussion by the Concord Country Club for, to have approval to replace existing irrigation pipes, which, given some of the more recent activities by the Concord Country Club, you know, I think they'll be on the hot seat for a while in terms of any of their irrigation needs.
I think those are, plans are on hold until, like, some NRC.
Exactly. So that was, that was, those were the highlights or, or most complicated lights. Other than that, I did, I did duck out of my Direct HGC meeting, which was a fairly pro forma meeting, to bear witness to the sendoff of my spouse from the, the schools, which I'll let whoever is the liaison for, for report. But it was certainly a wonderful event.
Linda?
I attended the, another meeting of the Affordable House Trust Committee and the Concord Housing Development Corporation, both of which are in preparation for the town meeting. And also on Friday, the Nuclear Metals Reuse Planning Committee met and heard Peter Loewit from the Devens Enterprise Commission, where significant development, as everyone knows, has gone on at Fort Devens. He spoke about some of the issue, presented a brief presentation for the committee to consider. And then the other thing that that committee is working on is the outline for their final report that will come to the Select Board in December, before December. One of the immediate questions that that committee has is whether the Select Board would be interested now, oh, in better weather to visit the 229 Main Street. Not everyone on the current board has seen that site. I have and would be willing to go back.
I think it should be well worth it. I've visited the site a couple of times, and I think it would be well worth it to go out there and take a look around because it's, it's very interesting, and it's going to be in front of you guys for the next few years. You might as well begin to get your arms around this. Other? Linda?
That's it.
I would be very interested in a site visit, and that's a good suggestion before the weather.
Yeah.
So I'll follow up on getting that scheduled.
Given my liaison assignment, I want to go.
Very good.
I'm going to make a suggestion, and that is, you know, if you've listened, if you've been listening to our committee liaison reports over the last few months, they have been more than committee liaison reports. Susan reported Conservation Coffee, Business Partnership, and Concord Together, and over, over time. So I'm going to suggest that we think about adding a regular agenda item that would come after the Town Manager's update and the Chair's remarks, was a community update, where any member of the Select Board who's attended any kind of community activity and thinks it's worthwhile could bring it to the community's attention. Because I think it would, we have to get our liaison reports a little bit more tightly focused on the committees for which we are liaisons. But a lot of the stuff that we talk about, those community updates, are very important information, and I think we would be well advised to continue to find a place for them on our agenda. So I've made that suggestion, and you guys can figure it out. Next item on our agenda is miscellaneous correspondence. Until we have a new correspondence policy, we continue to make it part of the, part of the regular packet that gets sent out.
Mike, did you have liaison reports?
I did. I had Hugh Cargo Trust was the only committee that I attended this week. I attended the partnership as well as Susan. I attended the Concord Together. And, and I also attended two town committee meetings. I attended the Town Staff Committee for Annual Town Meeting that we held on Thursday, and also attended the summary motion meeting attended by the town moderator and the town council and others, Stevens, I think. So, all right, so next is, I don't think I should be required to.
Mike, I'll, I'll take this one on. While you have a lot of work to do between now and conclusion of town meeting, we didn't want to, this is the last scheduled Select Board meeting before the actual day of town meeting. So we wanted to be, take this opportunity and be sure to recognize you for the incredible leadership that you've provided to the Select Board during your tenure and, including two, not one, but two years as chair, far longer than you ever anticipated would, would last. So on behalf of your fellow Select Board members, I'd like to read the following proclamation for the benefit of the public and for you. So just sit back and enjoy it. Whereas Michael E. Lawson was elected by the citizens of Concord to the Select Board from 2015 to 2020, having previously served the town on the Finance Committee from 2020 to 2015. And whereas he has served the town with distinction for his recognized leadership skills, not once, but twice, as Select Board Chair in 2017, 2018, and again in 2019 to 2020. And whereas during his term on the Select Board, he has also lent his incisive financial analytic skills to the Concord Financial Audit Committee and the Massachusetts Municipal Association Fiscal Policy Committee from 2015 to 2020. And will also be remembered as a most memorable host and honorable town delegation member to the Town Sister City Nani Japan. And whereas during the Select Board terms, he served as Chair of the 2018-2019 Town Manager Search Committee, which successfully concluded in the Select Board appointment of a new town manager, following the 26-year tenure of the previous town manager, providing insightful leadership to all in the important transition for the town. And whereas the town has greatly benefited from his strong leadership experience and steady governance hand during this year's COVID-19 pandemic, which suddenly upended all businesses usual and unprecedentedly, because extended his second term as Board Chair into the early fall. And whereas he has characteristically tackled complex challenges under the purview of the Select Board and town, often undaunted by the enormity of the tasks involved, recommending courses of action to the fellow Select Board members and others that also broadly included input from town citizens, town committee members, and town departments in shaping direction or solution to challenging issues. And whereas. direction or solution to challenging issues. And whereas leadership has, his leadership has been characterized as dedicated and focused, thoughtful and decisive, while also consistently respectful of others and open to differing points of view. And where he has not gone unnoticed that he has demonstrated abilities to add a touch of levity when needed, and admirably can separate difficult governance decisions from the many friendships he has with town citizens. And so therefore, let it be resolved on behalf of the town that we wish to duly recognize Michael E. Lawson for his exemplary leadership in the Select Board, on the Select Board and gratefully thank him for so ably serving the Concord community with deep commitment, honor, and aplomb. So thank you, Mike. And no document such as this could capture the many significant events that you've presided over during your six years. But no doubt, you'll hear more about that later.
Thank you.
Mike, may I just add something from the Peanut Gallery and the citizens of Concord?
As long as it's complimentary.
Well, you, you be the judge. I, I had the honor of interviewing Mike to appoint him to the Finance Committee. And I think the dates on that should be checked, Linda, because I believe it was 2009 or 2010. And I, I thought it would be great to have Mike on the Finance Committee and provide a liaison between the National Park Service, his other half had something to do with, and, and the Town of Concord. And Mike luckily agreed and, and went on the Finance Committee. Subsequently, he's allowed his spouse to get away from the National Park Service. I'm glad that you all didn't let Mike get away from the town as quickly. And on behalf, for all the citizens of Concord, I just want to endorse that, that thought that you just read, Linda, and thank Mike for his tremendous leadership and all, all the hours he spent on behalf of the town. So thank you very much. And you can determine whether that's complimentary or not, Michael.
Well, I can't say it was always a pleasure, but I can't say it was always.
Mike, I, this is Diane Proctor and I'm, I interrupt often, but I just want to say thank you for your accessibility. Whenever we've needed questions answered, you were right there to answer them. You were candid, you were forthright, you were discreet when that was called for. And that has been deeply appreciated by, I know, citizens of Concord and, and I can speak for myself as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, it really was a privilege. I recommend it to any other citizen in town. It's a great way to get to know your fellow Concordians. And sometimes the issues are not a lot of fun, but what are you going to do with Mr. Banfield today?
I'd just like to add my thanks, Mike, for all the work you've done, for working collaborative with, with the Finance Committee. And on behalf of everybody on the Finance Committee, I just wanted to say thank you because I think our committee work is, is working very harmoniously at this point among the, the big committees in town. And I really appreciate your role in all of that, making that possible. So thanks.
Thanks so much. I certainly appreciate it. Stephen?
I just want to add a personal note, Mike, because I, I've probably known you the least of anybody here. But I just want to say for myself, thank you for being such a great mentor and supporter. And, and we work, obviously as Chair, you work closely as the manager. And this was going to be a difficult transition for anyone who was going to be in this role. And your insight and guidance and support and at times pushback really made it much easier than I think it otherwise could have been. So I owe you a personal debt of gratitude for making that easier for me personally. But I also think that the organization owes you a debt of gratitude because it could have been much more destabilized than that. We were able to, to kind of manage the transition pretty effectively. So thank you.
Thank you. That's enough. All right. So now on the agenda is public comments. If you want to make a public comment, unmute yourself. And if I don't see you, I see Diane. So Diane, go first.
Thank you. I speak for the League of Voters as the chair of the Select Board. Stephen? Oh, yes. 57 Sudbury Road, Concord, Massachusetts. I apologize. Stephen, I wonder, you said that the meetings you were having with, and I'll have to pull up my notes to see exactly, were not public meetings. And I wonder if you could clarify that. I thought all meetings of any collaborative group in town, even if not filmed by MNN, would at least be on some sort of URL for people to observe. And I'll go back to my notes to figure out exactly what meeting that was. Hold on. It was the.
The Transportation Advisory Committee.
Transportation Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Yeah. And it's, it's, it's a town manager appointed committee, which, as you know, is, and I'm not, don't take, don't take this wrong way. It's not subject to the open meeting law in the way that a Select Board appointed committee would be. But nevertheless, we, like I said, want to invite input from people who have matters of interest. And we certainly, like I said, will track our activities and report them to the, to the Select Board. And by extension, the broader community.
I wonder if you can think of any reason why a URL to allow people who wish to observe could not be made available, even if they were muted and, and not able to necessarily participate, Stephen?
We haven't really, we hadn't really given it much thought, to be honest with you. But we can certainly look at that. I mean, to some extent, there's some kind of nitty gritty planning that goes on, but we can certainly look at providing, if we're going to be, if we're going to be meeting via Zoom, allowing that.
Yes. I mean, who knows? Maybe no one will show up, but it just.
I mean, there are some aspects of planning that, that need to be, may, may need to, for security reasons or public safety or something like that, may need to be non-public so we can kind of figure out some options before presenting the options publicly. But other than that, like I said, we intend to, to work with the community, get input and provide our, our efforts.
I think we've just been following, we meaning the League and, and others have been following the transportation initiative that Jane undertook quite a few years ago. Great interest. And so I, I hope that we can, we meaning the town and citizens can see a way forward to make that possible. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Yes, Mike, Tanya Galis. I, I, I'm not on camera.
I know. I can't see you.
Yeah, I can't be on camera today. Sorry.
Close the record before you tell us what's on your mind.
Tanya Galis, 62 Prescott Road. Well, I, I do want to join everyone else in congratulating you on your service on the Select Board. What Diane just asked about, about the open meeting law or open meetings, I, I believe that the Town Manager can, can appoint a committee to advise him or some, on something. And that committee does not have to abide by the open meeting laws. But I believe, I mean, I, I don't have time to double check. This is the first time I'm hearing about it. But I, I believe that otherwise, any committee, no matter how appointed by whomever, is subject to the open meeting law. So that may need to be looked into. I mean, perhaps it already has been, but that may need to be looked into before assuming that just because the Town Manager appoints that committee, it is necessarily not under the open meeting law. The other comment I'm, I wanted to make, since I hesitated, you know, I don't want to, you know, pour cold water on the celebrations and everything. But I am, I am quite concerned about the Select Board's recent vote on Article 16. For those of you who voted in favor because you support affordable housing in town and you think this is a good project, and I think many of us share that sentiment. I mean, not in terms of what it provides or might provide for the town. I do not, there has been an assumption that the developer will really withdraw, like he is claiming he will. And I don't think that's the message they are giving when they keep reminding us of the affordable housing need or, or they try to imply that we will be judged if we don't vote for it. Or, and they got this award from the state, they are not likely to turn the whole thing down now that they got that award from the state. So that, to me, is not enough reason to assume that they will really withdraw. And for those of you who thought that the new document makes it more clear that the developer will not ask for any more town funding, that I think it exactly opposite happened when that sentence was added to Terry's statement that said, if, if there is an ask, the town, town meeting and Select Board will decide. That in effect validates that there might be other asks. And that paragraph should even be under the company's obligations, not the town's obligations. So there, I think, I think, I think it really does not do what some of you thought it does. And that's a serious concern. Other than that, thank you for everything.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional citizen comments? I don't see anyone, but if I'm missing you, just start talking and we'll get caught up. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Just a second. Clark, please call a roll.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Ms. Ekman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
Thank you. I note that it passes unanimously. We'll see you all at town meeting. Stay well.